Roll call please.
Baikman?
Present.
B Singer?
Present.
Boss?
Present.
EKIS?
Present.
Frye?
Present.
Gross? Troller?
Present.
Trump?
Present.
We have a quorum. All right, the first order of business is the amendments from the regular meeting on April 11th, and I have some amendments at your desk. I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve the amendments with the, uh, er, the amendments with the following amendments in it.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh. Uh, we had a special meeting for the minutes April 18th.
Move to approve special minutes on the 18th.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh. And special meeting for April 19th.
Move to approve special meeting April 19th.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh. All right. I would just like to make a mayoral comment before public comments, and that is, we have all completed one year of our service for the people that were just elected last year. So, uh, I think we've got a lot-
It's been one year now?
It's been one year. The last meeting in April, so we are through one year of service. So, thank you all for your service, everybody that was elected at the last election. All right, we will move on to public comments. Um, the first section is for people who want to share, um, their concerns. They're limited to five minutes, and the discussion action items are limited to 15. Uh, please come forward to the podium and give your name, uh, your first and last name, your address, and your reward. We have one person currently under public comments, and that's Marvin Turner.
I thought I complied for 15 minutes. I did what the agenda called for, but I presented something, I had something to be voted on, and I presented you with four pages. But I'll go with five minutes, and I won't take much of your time, because you have a pretty heavy schedule tonight. First thing I'd like to do is issue a public apology to Mr. Shane, 28th March. I misspoke, I shouldn't have given him the comment that I requested. No more comments, that was my misspeak. On line four of Street 4, Gary Gundelfinger's priority list, the alley which runs north of the Presbyterian Church, that was removed under Mr. Frye's request. I've talked to some of the people that attend that church, and I have attended that church, but not recently, and I'm afraid if I went in there, it'd get a large thunderclap and think it imploded. But I'd like to have that pushed back to line four where it was. Cromie's sidewalk, in that 20th Street GI project, which I consider the Battle of the Bulge, it's like 39,000 for 850, 860 feet of sidewalk. It'll be used by a few people. Mr. Cromie's sidewalk's used by many. I don't still bear in count, because there's a lot of people going in and out of that. And I know for a fact that at one time, the city had some sort of a program downtown where they paid for sidewalks as part of the beautification of downtown. And I would ask that instead of the 800 and something dollars that you've approved, that you approved the whole 4,800 or what it is for his sidewalk. Since I'm limited on time, I'd like to read something that came out of the Speaker's paper. "There is a distinctly American idea that makes our structure of government unique among nations in history. Power lies with the people, and government exists only to secure their inalienable rights. Every person is entitled to these protections." That's from Governor Sam Brownback, Speaker Capitol Journal, 16th of April. It referred to his veto on Senate Bill 338. Had something to do with abandoned property. I intended to touch on Bill of Rights, but since the lawyer's not here, and I only have five minutes, I don't, I don't feel that your agenda, President, addresses the Bill of Rights, freedom of speech. I went to county commissioners' meeting this morning, the first one I ever attended, and I asked them about the parametric guidelines regarding time, and they told me they had none. If somebody had something to present for an hour, they'd sit there and listen to it. Obviously, you're not at that disposal, and I'll just turn my time off.
Thanks, Marvin.
Thanks, Marvin. All right, is there anyone else that wants to share, um, public comments?
Hi, my name is Ellen Barber. I live at 904 North 11th in Marysville, and I'm in Ward 2. I come tonight representing Partnership for Growth, and I wanted to update you a little bit. It's been a while since I've been here. The thing I'm the most excited about is our website is now up. It's a, it's a beautiful website. Tom Parks has allowed us to use his pictures on it, and it's very attractive. And, um, if we want to retain jobs in the county, we have been looking for ways to do that. And Potawatomi County has found that if they had a job site on their website, they had a lot more people coming to their site, and it was actually retaining jobs. So I've, I've followed their suit, and, um, we have 47 jobs listed today on our job site. And out of those 47 jobs, actually 39 of them are from Marysville. So Marysville is greatly represented. Of course, we're the largest city, and so that would be true. Potawatomi County also found that 50% of their hits to the website, um, came through Facebook. And so we started our Facebook up about three weeks ago. We already have a post-reach of over 5,000 people. So I'm excited about that. Our website also includes the available properties for housing, all of our county realtors, all our available sites for our business parks. And now we have farmland that's opened up in Summerfield, and Blue Rapids, and of course, Marysville. So, the Partnership for Growth has just decided to become a member of the Kansas Economic Development Alliance, and that's a $300 a year membership, and it allows you to be on what's called Location 1. That's a website where if someone from California wants to move to Kansas and start a business, they go to Location 1 and see all the business, uh, business park sites available. And so we'll be able to put those sites, including Marysville, up on that site. Because our site is so crucial to job retention, much of which falls into Marysville's boundaries, and also it helps, um, expose our business park, I would like for our site to be added to the city's website. At the bottom of the city's page, there are several tourism and chamber links, and I would request that ChooseMarshallCountyKS.com also be added. Is there any discussion now, so that we could see if that could be approved tonight?
Do you know what that's supposed to be? Do you know what she's talking about on her website?
We could probably add it somewhere. Add them a little.
Those links are listed like for, um, the chamber and travel and tourism? Okay.
Yeah, and there is one other page, and it's kind of like a back page, but it has, um, I think it probably was MCDC, but they don't have a link. If we could be put on that page as well, but with our link, that would be great.
Do you know which, that's under?
New to town.
New to town? Okay.
Okay, great. Um, one of my jobs under Partnership for Growth is to keep up with all the government entities, which can turn out to be a full-time job. I'm sure our city planner understands that. Um, but, one of the things that I just attended was a, a capital improvement planning program that showed you how over five years to plan for, um, capital improvement of a city. And I was shocked to find out, with all the commissioners and mayors and different people there, out of 30 people, only one group had a plan that lasted for five years. So it kind of shocked me about the lack of planning that a lot of cities are just not picking up on. And I was pleased to find out that Mayor Grund is looking at strategic planning. And I just wanted to encourage you to include Partnership for Growth as part of your capital improvement planning of your strategic growth. One of the reasons is because one of the players that we deal with is called the North Central Regional Planning Commission. And I don't think that gets enough press, but actually, our commissioners pay, they invest thousands of dollars every year for us to be part of that commission. And that commission allows our surrounding communities to get low-cost loans and limited grants. For instance, they have 0% loans on infrastructure. That covers roads, water, sewer. They have grants on engineering design fees, which you have to do whatever you're doing to plan. And all of this is open to the city of Marysville. I'd be happy to guide you to the right contacts as I work with these people weekly. This is also one of the groups that I, when someone comes in and wants to bring a business into Marysville or a surrounding area, I introduce them to this group and get them contacted with the right people. Another 0% loan is called the Redleg, and Carla just became familiar with that one. That's open to Marysville City as well. So there's financing, capital improvement, funding ideas I'd like to provide as an option to you. Along the lines of retaining an important business in the community, Partnership for Growth will be providing some information to your budget workshop packets this next week involving the Orshlin's store. We desire to keep communication open with Orshlin's and the city to keep that project moving forward. I will also include some grant information that could be useful to the city. And last but not least, Partnership for Growth encourages Marysville to support us with a bronze-level membership, as other cities are often doing. Or, you could let us know if there comes an office open in the fall, if there's a combination of offices that one might not be needed or funded by the city. I would like a city office if that's possible. Right now Partnership for Growth is doing work no other office in the county's doing. I've written proposals and a grant to invite new businesses into our area, and we have a workforce training project in the works with West Star. We've helped businesses connect with small business administration development centers to grow their business, and we're finding new ways, through the web, to retain our businesses and grow the ones we have. I hope you want to be a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. We will start working on our strategic plan. That's one of my goals. All right, um, is there anyone else on public comments? Move along to business and discussion items. Daniel Monaco, you're up first.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. My name is Daniel Monaco. I'm with BG Consultants out of Manhattan, Kansas, and, um, we proposed on the Clink project along Highway 36, and we appreciate, uh, the faith in selecting us to assist you with that project. We have had, um, a site visit and met with Administrator Shane and Mayor, and I know two council members were also there, and we talked about the process of what we would like to use in, in moving forward with the project. At that time, one of the components was, is there's a possibility of, um, utilizing fiscal year 2018 for KDOT funding for the, the highway going south. And in regards to that, um, we would, we would assist the city in developing some particular estimates for that project. But along with that, because of the timing and the forecasting of, of KDOT funding right now, or maybe the lack thereof, um, we have presented an agreement to the city regarding three phases of, of our service. And we think that's important. The first phase would be, would begin the preliminary survey work along Highway 36. But we would also start some preliminary survey work just for the purpose of putting estimates together along, um, the highway south, and that would go all the way down to Jackson. And that would be Phase 1, and that's where we would like to propose to stop the agreement at this time. Phase 2 would be to continue on with the, the full design of the original project along Highway 36, and Phase 3 would be the construction and engineering requirements for that particular project. Why we would, uh, currently, and what we discussed, and we, we agree would probably be the best case for the city, is just to move forward with the Phase 1 that would put you in line for the application for the second project, and then let's wait and see what the funding comes about. The reason why that may be important is if you are awarded that project, and we would move forward with that as well, there would be some cost savings, both in engineering as well as the construction, because you'd be adding a larger project. You would expect that the cost would be, uh, slightly reduced because of that. So with that, first of all, like I said, I, my name is Daniel Monaco. I am the office manager of our Manhattan office, and I'll be project manager on this project in city contact. I did bring up with me Matthew Coles in the original meeting, who will be our project engineer on the project. And, um, I guess I'm open to questions or anything you may have of, of the project, of me personally, of BG Consultants.
How much estimate of cost saving would you imagine? I mean, if you do both projects?
Um, on our end, you probably see a, um, 15% reduction between the two. You know, I'd say 10 to 15% on that. On the construction, I would see something similar, typical. It would, it would probably add approximately 50% to the total cost of what you currently are looking at. So that makes it an even more attractive project.
Okay. I saw an email. I know on this you estimated that, um, engineering, the engineering services to be at the 8.35%.
Yes.
And so if we do have the opportunity to do the Clink 2018 project, then your, um, those would reduce down to, like, um, it was estimated to 7.4% in an email that you had sent, Rick. So you see that 7.4% to apply both to this current contract as well as the 1 for Highway 77?
Yes. If, if you are awarded, we would renegotiate not only this, the Highway 36, but the Highway 77 project to combine them. It's also important because of, the Phase 1 portion, um, does include dollars that would be required for the Highway 36, so we've reduced that amount out of, um, the design fee for Phase 2. So, you're getting a portion of that money back on, on credit, if you will, so.
Okay. And, um, just so you know, City Attorney Olson did review this and was fine with it, so. You guys have any questions for?
Well, I do. Daniel, for right now, what I'm looking at, the proposed fee for Phase 1 is $4,000. So are you saying that to do both of these at the same time would reduce this $4,000, just 15%?
No, the $4,000 would be, that's upfront originally. If you look at the second, the Phase 2 portion, uh, that is an amount of $41,000.
$41,000, okay.
The 8.35, and just so you know, that's a median fee curve that we utilize a lot as we go through, unless there's extenuating circumstances. Um, that, uh, $41,000 is reduced by $2,500. The original 8.35 would, would have been $43,500. And so out of the $4,000, we're pulling out $2,500. That's, um, the, the remaining portion will be for moving forward and assisting the city with the Phase 2 application, or the Project 2 application. So that portion would not be reduced. The portion for Phase 2 and Phase 3, you would expect would be reduced accordingly if those projects are combined.
Yeah, thank you. Any further discussion? I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve the contract with BG Consultants for the Clink proposal. For Phase 1, and just focus on Phase 1.
Actually, we would be approved the entire-
Contract, right.
Contract. And then if we get the second one, we would come back and probably revise this to the adjusted numbers. Am I correct about that?
Yes.
Okay, so we were actually approving Phase 1, 2, and 3 to proceed. He's only going to proceed with Phase 1 at this time, and we will tell him when to go forward to Phase 2. Is that all right?
Yes.
So, you had the whole contract, right?
Yep.
And you were the second?
Same.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I, there's two, if you just want to send one back with me when that good time, that'll be fine.
Okay. Are you needing that tonight, or we can just?
No, I don't, I don't need that.
Okay, we'll get it done this week.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Joey Cromie. I still have Joey, so I'm going to call you Joey. Until you tell them to change it to Joe, I'm going to call you Joey. So there's two proposals. You want to explain anything to us?
No, apparently, you guys have proposals that InLine has done for you. I haven't seen anything yet, so I'll just let you entertain me with that.
Okay, there's two proposals. Obviously, the first one on page, well, I don't know, the new number is-
26.
26. Is when the city would do part of the work, and on the very next page is if InLine does all of the work. And my only question was, I see that you're reducing, lowering the drain by 2 inches, and I assume Tony directed you to do that. Is that true, Tony? The storm drains being lowered 2 inches, that's based on your guidance?
We looked at that on site with Rick, and that's what I came to the conclusion that could be done.
Okay, it's on both proposals, but I just wanted to clarify that 2% was what Tony recommended. So, um, anyway, so the difference, one is 42.5, and the other one's 4,900. I spoke with Rick today about, the difference is $650. I asked him what it would take our crews to do, and he said it would take it more than one day. So that would be, it would cost more than the 650 difference for our crews to do it. So, you guys have any questions for Joey Cromie?
We also talked to one, the cost to extend it all the way to the curb, I thought.
This is, this is all the way to the-
To the storm drain.
To the storm drain, okay, all right, thank you.
And putting in a new storm drain.
Okay, yep, all right.
This does not include, it takes the bricks out, it doesn't put them back in, because we will, our guys will put those in.
And we'll get rid of some of those, hopefully.
Every feedout will be better.
We can hope. So, um, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve 146 feet of curb and gutter in front of Cromie's Market for InLine construction in the amount of $4,900.
Coming out of, um, what fund? The sales tax.
Are we going to take the sales tax? Sales tax, please.
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh. All right. So I guess we're going to do that in conjunction with your sidewalk, so. InLine's doing both parts, so it shouldn't be a problem, right?
Shouldn't be bad.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you for being patient with us.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Joe.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Carol Blocker with the Dust Control.
Yes, low mayor, council. Rick, uh, Rick, I don't know if I put an extra copy in that I brought to the city hall last week for you. Did you?
I think they've got it here.
If you don't mind, I have one other copy I'd like to pass out to everyone, if that would be okay. And I'm from Ward 4, by the way. All this is the lots that are joining 12th Road, and the measurements, that's how I came up with the measurements, but I did.
You have more wires than normal. Thank you.
Okay, as you know, I brought in a packet with the, last week for you to preview ahead of time, so that if you have any questions also, that you'll have a chance to look at, uh, what I, what I'm going to present. As you know, we've had a problem with dust out there, not just for safety, but also for, um, just too dusty. All the homes along 12th Road gets hit pretty hard, because that road, if there was a count that was out there, I don't know, we used to have a machine, at one time there was a machine set up out there for a road count. Rick, do you know anything about that, or when that was?
It was, it's been quite a while.
Long time. Well, it's what I would probably compare to maybe North Street or 11th Road, coming from the cemetery to the highway, very busy. And we get industry, the big industry in town, the big trucks. We get a semi once in a while, we get railroad, we get, uh, tons of traffic out there from people in the rural areas, kids, and the kids like to go fairly fast, so that kicks up the dust, too. And so because of all those reasons, and we have 23 homes out there right now, and I think there's around 20, 21 children, and we just feel that something needs to be done. And we'd love for long-term, to look at long-term, maybe the city annexing the rest of that road, and in a long-term plan, maybe do something with that, because there's development right now, just in that little area we're in, for about 17 more homes. And overall, the whole subdivision out there, for the whole platted area, there's room for about 100 new homes, which of course would help increase the funds coming into the city. And so, uh, we just feel like as, also city residents, we are in the city, we do pay city taxes, we do pay sewer and water, you know, we just deserve to have some, if nothing else, dust control right now. You know, something that will help us out there in safety and in cleanliness. So, you're seeing on here in the, the list that I gave you, again, how much it's going to cost, because I called and got a bid for what it would take just to do from Keystone Road intersection to, um, Limestone Road South. And the reason for that is that is where the homes are located right along there, and there's a lot of traffic, not only for that reason, but if I would have gotten bids to do Keystone as well, clear over to where the blacktop is, as well as, it would have been nice if we could have gone from Keystone to where Mid-Kedings driveway was, but that little portion is not city. So I did not get bids for any of that, because I'm trying to keep the cost down so that we can get dust control out there and make it affordable for the city. And our ward representative so graciously gave up his alley cost. Put that on the back burner. That was about, I think, $3,000 to $4,000. So if that was budgeted to do your alley, and you no longer feel that you'd want to have it done, the money should be there to do the dust control, I would think, for our street. And there is information all about the, um, the chemical that is used, and it's non-corrosive to vehicles. It's environment-friendly, you've read the packet, you probably already see that. It's good on the, on the roads, the more it's used, the more it's, uh, less maintenance for gravel and for equipment that has to push gravel around.
I understand when, uh, once this is applied, you cannot grade the road again.
Right, that's right. And I did talk to the, the commissioners today and found out, they will come out, and they will prepare the road, grade it, fill in the potholes, make it smooth for the preparation of having this laid out, and once it's done, then they don't do anything with it again until, I imagine, the next season. They know that they can't go back over it. We've had it done, what, two or three times, I think, in the seven years I've been out there. Makes a world of difference, world of difference. And I have no problem with a few-
You think, you think, I'm sorry, I interrupted you. Do you, you think that dust control's been applied how often?
I think twice, maybe three times, since I've been out there.
Because I was trying to go back and what we knew about, and I know in 2014, maybe, and maybe 2012.
Did the city, did the county commissioners used to do it? Because it seems the first year I went to-
Before that, the county didn't. And as I understand, the county, um, they billed the cost back to the homeowners.
We didn't know, they didn't, we didn't ever have to pay for that. But I think it was done, the first time around, I went to the commissioners, and I didn't have to come to the city for that. And I think, I hope I'm not mistaking, but, uh, I think we had dust control that- And I think, I hope I'm not mistaking, but I think we had dust control that year, but we never did get billed for that. They paid for it.
Well, I think I asked the commissioners once, and they said that they always bill out those costs.
They did say that. Yeah, we didn't, we didn't ever get billed for it, but maybe.
I think, I don't know, maybe they changed it based on which road. Eighth Road-fronted properties, I'm pretty sure one or two of those homeowners said they got billed, so maybe, I think this, like a lot of things, has changed over time, like every time they've done it, it's been handled just a little differently than the time before. And I think you have a number of people who live in that addition here tonight.
We do, and I also have several that could not be here tonight, and we do have, thank you for bringing that up, I do have signatures from folks out there, I think there's only two that we could not get a hold of. One owns a lot out there that's not built on yet, and so they're not here to sign it. One, two other families, I think they travel a lot or something, couldn't catch them, but everyone else has signed this, if you'd like a copy of this, you're sure welcome to it, but we have 100% support, 98% support, of the folks out there that want something done. And again, dust control is what we're asking for this year, and we're just asking the city would look at the future, because with providing housing for the city, which is what had been asked for for a lot of years, because we just didn't have enough housing, you know, and somebody buys the ground, they subdivide it, platter, they start building homes, you know, we would, yes, we knew we had gravel going out there, but we figured at some point in time, with that developing and the city, you know, building the city's tax base with that, that the city would look at doing something to provide good roads out to that subdivision that's going to house anywhere up to 100 more houses.
Well, Carol, I've researched several cities since I've been on the city council, and many towns and cities assess 100% back of street, sewer, water, wire, back to the lot owners.
Not to, that's not been Marisville's past practice, and I don't think it should be established.
I know.
I don't think it should be established now, just because a new subdivision wants decent streets. And my other comment to that, Darlene, respectfully, knowing that you investigated that and looked at that, North Street didn't pay for, the folks didn't pay for their street, 11th Road did not pay for their streets, and the proposed $450,000 to $500,000 concrete road that may be going in on 11th Road.
Well, that hasn't been decided.
I know it hasn't yet, but if it does, are those homeowners going to be assessed back, the cost of putting that road in? You know, I'm just saying.
That's been decided yet, for sure.
Yeah, that's not been decided. Well, and I'm just saying, it hasn't been a past practice of the city, and I don't know that, I feel it's fair.
Well, I know Park Place, when they went in, they had to pay for their street.
They paid specials for their interior streets, but they did not pay for 16th Street getting up to them, which is a main street getting up to them, just like us, we paid for our streets when we bought our lots, when we bought our homes, those streets were paid for in the cost of our lots, so we paid for our interior streets already. We didn't have the specials like they did in North Park. But big, main streets getting up to North, North Park, they didn't have to pay for, they just paid for their interior streets.
For what it's worth, I appreciate that you're not asking for a slapdash paved street, because we don't need more streets, like we have 11th Road now.
Right.
Or the section of 12th Road by Hometown Lumber that will need repairs if the Oerschel project moves forward. You know, as a stopgap measure, this is pretty much, I think, the minimum that could be done. I, I do appreciate, too, that you did look at this from Keystone to Limestone. The section between Mick Keating's and Keystone is in the county 100%, I believe, that whole stretch, was a third of a mile. Yeah. So, I mean, my opinion, I don't think, don't think we should be dust treating roads that aren't even in city limits.
Right.
But this section of road where it actually is feet from people's houses, and would create a dust cloud, looks like a different situation.
What is, what is the speed limit?
It's 30, but try to get people to do 30 on that road. I think if they did some.
Well, that's part of the problem then.
Some speed bumps, maybe. We've had many people in the ditch, in the, where you take the curb to Limestone, police have been out there many times to get people out of the ditch, because it's not because of the dust, I would say, for that reason, it's the youth. The youth are flying through there.
And Keystone Road's got a stop sign at 12, and it's not well obeyed, and so especially difficult there.
And they've ended up straight ahead in the ditch, without, yeah. And so, we're always going to have that.
Beep.
You know, that's nothing that I think we can control, you can put up speed bumps, you can put up, reduce the speed, but unless it's policed.
I think the county section there is 30 miles per hour marked as well, but again, the county would have to patrol that third of the mile, which I'm sure is a low priority.
And again, the policing power, you know, as you saw in the information that I gave you, when you have half county and half city, there's confusion over where's our policing power stand, who's, who's going to?
And we had that situation with North Street until, what, two years ago? We annexed the north side of North Street, because that was the situation with our police, was westbound traffic was in a different jurisdiction than eastbound traffic. In your case, it'd be south and north.
Right, right. And I, like I said, I did talk to the commissioners today, and the commissioner that I did talk to said that if this is approved, and it's going to be allowed, then just make sure that he knows a few days prior to it being sprayed, so that he can get out there and prepare the road and get it ready.
Have they talked to all about dust treating their third of the mile, for lack of a better term, or any of that, that's their jurisdiction 100%?
I haven't talked to them about that at all.
I mean.
Yeah. But it would be nice, we'd love to see that part done, too.
If we move forward with this, it would be beneficial for them to piggyback onto that section, it would benefit you as well.
I would love to see that done. In fact, I think when we originally asked for dust control a few years back, we did ask for that, too.
From the end of paper, yeah.
Yes, and of course, being all county, that wasn't going to happen.
Right.
So. Did you happen to ask them if they were willing to participate in this cause?
No, I didn't. I did not ask them. I asked them what their responsibility is for that road, they said they do all the maintenance on the road, they gravel it, they pay for the cost of the gravel, they maintain it for the city, even the city's part, and I said, what does the city do for you? And they said they will take the snowplow out there when we need it. And I thought, last year, I think, we had 4 inches of snow and didn't get our streets cleared, and when I called and asked, it said, only if it's 4 inches or above will we grade out there, or clean the streets out there. You know, so, very little maintenance from the city on that road compared to what they're doing, they're out there every few weeks grading that thing, and they add the gravel, so I didn't really.
But we don't have that, don't we?
He said they pay for it, as with the county told me.
Oh, okay, then don't accept that bill.
Yeah.
Yeah, we pay half the road.
Well, that's what our agreement says, but I guess if they don't bill us.
Since, in this, you know, I guess since last year, has anyone from Eighth Road, or Jayhawk Road, or any of these other connected roads approached the city about dust control?
Not since last year.
How do you feel about that? Just addressing the people that come to us, and not addressing the other roads?
Squeaky wheel gets the oil. I mean, I, it's in ideal, you know, I've heard mixed things from people on different gravel roads, some people complain that once it's dust treated, because you can't go rework it, then it gets really rutted, or really washboarded, or that's the potential to happen, that's obviously the pitfall of it.
Do you know the nice thing about that, Todd? It slows them down.
That's true.
Right?
But it can also make them lose control.
It can.
It's a double-edged sword.
It can. But, you know, I think, again, it's something that, unless we have policing power out there all the time, and, you know, unfortunately, I watched one of the council meetings, and was a little upset, I shouldn't say upset, a little unnerved, I guess, when I heard a comment that the policing power doesn't really need to be so much out in our area, because the most that could be done there is a stolen bike, that it should be done in other parts of town where there's more danger. And I, I thought, we deserve the policing power, just like any other part of town does, too. So I don't want people to think we're just an entity out on the edge of town that's not part of the city, that doesn't deserve the same respect that the people in town deserve. And so, that, that was bothersome to me, so we do need the policing power, and they have been very good about driving out there and driving that area, and so we're very happy with that, we're not complaining about that, but I just don't want the perspective to be that, because we're that far out on the edge of town, we're not part of the city, we are.
Mayor, I mean, do you think, do you personally think it'd be worth investigating, talking to Scott Wood, is that right, Scottwood, about doing additional areas, or, I mean, to be even-handed?
Well, I just, you know, I know they're here, they have a consent of all these people, but I guess I feel, you know, in the past, we've always done four different areas, and to approve one because they come to us, and not approve the other ones that are in the city as well, is a little difficult, and the fact that we accepted responsibility for Jayhawk Road, that's not even shared now, we've, we accepted responsibly for that, so I find it hard that if we're not going to dust control streets we actually own completely, and then to start a process where you come in to complain, and then we'll give you dust control, I don't know.
I think you have to ask for it, I'm sorry, I think if people aren't asking for it, they don't want it bad enough, or it's not a big enough problem for them, I think they should come forward and ask for it.
And there doesn't appear to be a mobilization, I mean, this, this looks like it's a bare square footage cost, there's no mobilization fees or anything on the quote.
That's right, that's right.
So in theory, if we approved it, and then Eighth Road or Jayhawk Road came back, we would have this to go on and have this company quoted again. I mean, it's possible they're quoting this based on the fact that they're vaguely in the area, they're out of what, Over Park?
They are, but they have Van Walshleger from over the Home City area, he's the gentleman they use to come out and spray.
He's contracted.
He's here, and he will come do, do, and, and they have a deadline of May 1st, I saw on their documentation, in order to get their scheduling, and so.
I guess that causes me a strict, it causes me more grief about just choosing one street.
Well, I think if the folks would come back and ask for it, then you can make determinations on them and order for them, too, but I think if they really want it, they need to be researching it, and they need to be asking for it, rather than sit back and just wait for it to happen.
And that's true, I mean, when somebody comes with a complaint for a street, we don't hold it against them that there's another street that needs work, too. We address that issue.
Okay, I think you need to be realistic, that next meeting, we could have somebody from all the other streets, and instead of being a $2,000 cost, it'll be a 12. So we just need to be realistic about that.
And it's only a temporary fix.
It's, Darlene, again, I was watching council meeting, and you were talking about doing an alley that was a year ago was done, and already it's bad, and you were talking about needing it done again, I mean, if you're going to do chip and seal, or whatever it is.
I think that was Spring Street on 5th and 6th.
Yeah, and so it doesn't, it doesn't last either, you know, I mean, it's something that is a short fix also, well, this is something with application year after year, if you've read in the document, it talks about how it actually reinforces the road, I mean, it, it does good for the road, with the particles that are.
Well, then, I guess the county quit doing it, I thought, and the county quit doing it because they didn't like what it did to the roads.
Well, they used to use a product that was more corrosive, and now they have a different product that they use, and again, that information's in the packet, it talks about it, it talks about it's eco-friendly, it talks about how it works well, and you, and you don't have to gravel the road as much, with each rain, it absorbs down into the soil, and into the rock, and helps create less dust. And so, I just feel like, you know, I've come before the council, we've done this many times, and we appreciate what you have done, but it's time to do it again, we didn't get it done last year, and, and I think every, if we wait year after year after year without doing it, you know, it just, we'll be back each year, I'm sorry, but if they come back next month, and they, Eighth Road asks if they get theirs done also, or another road asks to get theirs done, then you can deal with that, but they won't be able to get it done this year, they'll have to get it done next year if the deadline is May 1st.
There are people out in the county who are personally having it done where they live. Are these lot owners willing to?
We shouldn't have to, Darlene, we, we, we live in the city, we pay city taxes, we pay utilities, we pay everything, but we get really no city service out there, other than utilities.
Well, each lot got thousands and thousands of dollars with, when we put in the sewer, the water, the fire, so each lot has, has gotten thousands of dollars.
And we paid high for our lots.
And, and all of our citizens are paying for that, are still paying for that.
And so are we, so are we, when Neiman Subdivision was built, same thing, same thing, it's no difference. When a city grows, there's, you're just going to deal with that. I mean, I'm wondering about Lily Creek, which I think is great that we have more subdivisions going in, but are we involved in that water situation there as the taxpayers, in any way?
Completely.
Okay. Well, I just, I just feel like $1,900 isn't a lot to ask, to come out there and provide dust control, safety for our homes out there.
You know, you're talking about the snow situation, we didn't have to put a whole lot into that this year either, so it's, I mean, we've had effective savings based on that, and the fact that we don't have to do the graveling, and we don't have to do the grading should count for something, in my eyes. And I'm, you know, I understand, this is the only access to that subdivision, there's no other outlet, it's not like, oh, there's the back way over to Keystone, I think eventually that's the way the plating is laid out, but at the current time, this is the only way in and out, and she's right about traffic, I mean, I run out there in the mornings, you'd be amazed how much in and out traffic there is.
Yeah.
And some people will come off from the Carden Road that way, rather than jump on 36, and it gets more than you'd think.
It does, it does.
So, I mean.
You know, is there a lot of people walking?
We do, thank you for bringing that up, we have a lot of them, we have, we have one family who said they don't even walk out Limestone any longer because the dust is so bad, you know, and the kids fly through there so much, that, you know, they don't even go that direction anymore. And so, there, but yet there's runners, there's still a lot of walkers out there, you know, we walk out there, so, but it's a lot of dust, you just have to be on the right side of the road, so when the cars go by, you're not getting blasted, but.
On the quote, there's got sales tax on here, or it's got, I assume that's, no envoy, it was quoted with sales tax to her, but it wouldn't be for us?
No, we wouldn't have the sales tax.
And I guess we would probably have to have them rebid this, since this is to Carol Blocker, rather than the city of Marisville. And, you know, and assuming all her numbers are right, there might, there might be a little difference.
If you, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but if you look at the form, I just, the page I just gave you with the lots, this is the frontages of each one of those lots that are on 12th Road, from Limestone clear to Keystone, that's the frontages, and when you add those up, it comes to 2,770.58 linear feet. The bid I had done for 1,300 linear feet, so it's a little bit more than, the bid is a little bit more than what it'll actually cost, but the additional 25, 30 feet there was to go to the middle of Keystone intersection, I just brought it to the end of the lots, and so, that would be the 2,758 linear feet would just be to the end of the lots, but if you went to the middle of Keystone intersection, Keystone, 12th Road, that would be the difference.
So if we were to move forward with this, Rick, do we need to get it rebid from them, or could we go based on that number and set a maximum?
Well, I don't think it's going to change much, except for sales tax coming up.
Yeah. So, I mean, do we need to approve it for the 18, say 1870.50, or do we approve no more than 19, based on the fact that it could vary, or, I mean, how do we handle that, when she had it quoted, and we actually didn't have it quoted?
You could set a maximum, I guess, you could just establish it at 2,000, I guess, that should probably cover it.
I move to approve the dust control quote from Scottwood Industries, not to exceed $2,000 from Keystone Road to Limestone Road along 12th Road, to come out of sales tax.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Oh, sorry.
Discussion.
I guess we've had so much discussion.
I know, but one comment, having actually lived for a number of years on a gravel, not currently, but having lived on a road that had, a gravel road that had dust control, I would just throw out the caveat that the washboarding can be very bad, and it is, as a resident, it's not just speed control, it's hard on vehicles, so my caveat would be, is if this road can't be graded until next year, and if it gets graded, then that's going to be, that would weigh on the decision to do it again, because I, that may be perfect, but one year can be completely different than the other, unless you've experienced it, sometimes the dust is better than the washboarding.
But I think, well, I think, you're right, and I've replaced enough suspension components in my life to be very well aware.
Yeah.
And you'll find out if anything's loose going over washboards.
Yep.
But I, I think probably the people out there mostly lived there for a year longer, so they might been there long enough to remember the other side of it.
They've been through...
So they, so maybe they've developed a preference for washboards over dust.
It could be, I'm just throwing the caveat that if it gets, I mean, I would just say if it gets graded, if it gets so bad that we say, the residents go to the county and say, "We need to grade it," then that, it only lasts a half, it only lasts half a season.
We can take that into consideration.
Yeah.
I, I grew up, I agree with Brad, I grew up and lived 18 years on a gravel road and, yeah.
It's, I don't care how fast, that slows almost worse than fast, so it just, but I, but I understand that the dust is not good either, so anyway.
That's true. You go fast enough, it actually gets smoother.
Yeah.
It's true. I'm not recommending, sorry.
It's true, you can, but it, yeah.
Just remove that comment.
I'm not saying no, I'm just...
Okay, is there any other discussion? All right. All in favor of doing dust control, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Division of the House?
Okay. Higman?
Yes.
B. Singer?
No.
Boss? No. E. Kiss?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Gross? No. Troller?
No.
Throm?
Yes.
Oh, wow. I'm really torn because this late in the season doesn't give any of the other streets an opportunity to come to the council. You know, the May 1st is the deadline.
I know, but didn't they have all season to do this if they really wanted it or felt like they needed it badly? And they can come forward and get it done next year. I think if you really are having an issue, which we all do and there's almost 23 signatures here, that has an issue with the dust out there and we're willing to come to the council and ask for the city's help, if we're the only one of those roads asking for help, I think we should be considered.
Thank you, thank you. But I would like to add that I would like, can we not contact the other people? I mean, I, I really feel torn to give preferential treatment when they come in on April 25th with a deadline May 1 to the other people that are also on gravel roads. I understand they were bold enough to come, they took the time, they got all the, but if they would've came March 1, I would feel much better because it gives all these other people opportunities. So this, this is hard for me to, to show preferential treatment with a deadline May 1.
Is that the deadline that he imposed on it?
It's a deadline that's on their actual bid.
Is that the company out of Overton Park? Yeah, I seen it on there.
Yeah, yeah. And I had no idea what the deadline was till I read it on there. And I could only get on the council and come to the agenda when I had time to get on. So, thank you.
I just hate showing preferential treatment to other people and that's what I understand. You did all your paperwork, you did all your work, but, um, anyway.
Who's, who's gonna contact Scottwood? Rick, can you ask them if that, that date is at all malleable or if they're, maybe they do a second pass in the area or, I mean, we can ask, we can explore.
Yes, until it's a local gentleman that's doing it, I mean...
I doubt they'll turn away business, you know, but seeking them out, so we can at least explore it.
Yeah. I would feel better about that because I, I don't like treating one, every other time that we've, we've only done it in 2014. When we did it in 2014, we hit all the roads, so everybody was treated the same.
Right.
That had gravel roads. So, that's why I'm with you. Thank you, Carol.
Thank you. Mayor?
I'd like to address a comment that Carol made in her presentation and that was about that you, that somebody had made a comment about, it was me. And what I had said was in the context of the police coming to us and asking or justifying why they had double the police force of another city our size and they are the largest part of our budget. So justification was, was necessary, but what I, when they said they had acquired like six, six more miles of territory to police, my comment was land does not commit crime. Yours is not a high crime area, not that you don't deserve to be police, 'cause yes you do. But when a police force plans their activity and what, where they're driving, that, that shift, it goes by how many crimes have been reported in what area. That area gets the most concentration. And blessed to all of you that you are in a low crime area, speaks well of the, of the properties out there and the fact that you probably lock your cars and shut your garage doors and, and take the precautions that a homeowner should. But the reason I said that was because it's not the land, you know, it's the people that commit crime and out there you don't have a high crime area. Therefore, there, we don't require double the size of a police force to patrol an area that doesn't have crime. That was, that was the intent of my comment, not that you don't deserve services or police protection. Thank you.
All right. The next item up is CES regarding the 11th Road improvements. And, um, Tony. Hey, when I look through this, you know, when I proposed this, I was hoping to get this project done by 2016. I don't know if I was in the dream world or what.
Constructed in 2016?
Yeah, I, and I'm reading through what you say and you say, um, you know, to bid it in 2016 and have it done in 2017, and you think that's a reasonable timeframe?
It is, and, I mean, we can look at that case too.
Well...
I, I should've asked last week and I, I just didn't.
Okay, so when I look at this, I'm thinking, you know, um, and I don't mean to defer anything, but I'm thinking, since we're gonna have a new city administrator onboard in June and it's likely to be bid and go out for bid late 2016 and to be done in 2017, that we actually table this until our newest city administrator's onboard and, and agrees that this is our highest priority road. How do you guys feel about this?
You can still start the design and the surveying on it, I mean...
Yeah, but I'm just thinking, I, I would rather know that we're all on a common goal here. Um, you know, the strategic planning of our streets, I think is a very high priority and I guess I feel, I would feel bad committing our new city administrator to something that he or she may not believe is the highest priority.
Well, you know, I can see your train of thought there. I mean, but I guess, maybe Kevin and I are on the same page that we've already determined that this is a priority for us as a council, so we can do the beginning stages so that way if the new administrator says, "Yes, this is what we want to do," then he or she can, we can go ahead where we've already done the groundwork. I, I look at this as just doing the preparation to give it a full hearing.
Right. I'm in the same, same agreeance, yeah.
I, I guess, I don't think we're really committing to it, we're committing to this side of it, but this is good, you know, for a year. There's just not a real big shelf life from this, right, Tony?
Right.
I mean, so we can use this in a year or in five years and we've, we've still done this much work so that we're ready.
But couldn't we delay the decision for a couple months?
I mean, I, if, if we weren't this close, but I think we're fairly close. I mean, you think about it, it's like six weeks away.
But, but he's prob, he or she is probably not gonna know from day one what priorities will be needed though, right? I mean, there'll be a learning curve there.
Well, yeah, I guess, um...
Experience curve, I guess.
Anyway, Vicki had a motion to table, what, for two months, let's say?
Two months.
That would take us to the end of June.
I second it.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, the motion to table for two months till our city administrator agrees on what we think about our roads. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So is that 6-2? Okay, so how do you guys want to proceed?
Seems that we don't want to go out for bidding yet. I think we need to proceed with, uh, number one, $650 surveying services. Number two, the preliminary engineering services and lump sum of $6,000. $850.
Are you, so you're saying you just want to do one and two at this point in time?
At this point in time.
Are you okay with that adjustment?
Yeah, we'll just revise that proposal based on that and just probably remove that.
Okay.
Because it could be this year or next year or, you know, three years from now, so...
At least we've, we've got the specs and plans for it, so...
You know, if you guys notice, a couple of the excluded items for your consideration, I think Mr. B. Singer brought it up last time, was a pedestrian path.
That's correct.
And the potential for that, um, with that's something you guys would maybe want to consider, it's, would probably require additional right-of-way.
I was gonna say it's gonna be called right-of-way and widening and...
While you're providing people, or potentially providing people a new street, it's a good time to request additional right-of-way.
They're usually more amenable.
Right, and they're getting something. And it's just, again, for your consideration, that's...
And, you know, maybe that's a portion that we consider assessing back to people, you know, giving them the option. You know, we put in the street, if you want pedestrian walkways, you know, that's, we assess those back to you. I mean, that's a way to approach a starting process of this assessment process and let them be part of the discussion there.
What if, let's say, neighbor one and three want it and neighbor two doesn't, who's gonna...
Well, it's based on that 51% of the frontage fee, yeah, so they win. So, but I'm, I'm, I'm just thinking that's something that probably is negotiable, is sidewalk here is...
They're gonna have to have a place to walk. Oh, I know.
It's a lot of good traffic, actually.
Yeah, there, it does. It's major.
Right.
So I don't know if it would be better there or better putting it up on the hill through a sidewalk type deal.
Sidewalk goes to what, currid lane?
Yeah.
Well, and then there's a break and then it starts again.
Yeah.
What, what are you saying? Where you, where do you want to put this?
Instead of doing a run lane on the street because of the, we're already bound by the drainage of it, continue a sidewalk down one side or the other of the properties.
But all our ditches are on those sides.
They're on both sides.
Yeah.
You'd have to put this sidewalk up, you know, and...
On the other side of the ditch.
Yeah.
I think, I mean, obviously for safety purposes, it would be great, ideal.
So, what, do you guys want to approve this contract or, um, amending it by pulling number three from D and proceeding ahead with the contract as amended or something like that?
I'll second it, yep. Kevin made a motion, I'll second it.
So doing one and two?
One and two.
On three at this time?
Yep.
And you second it?
Correct.
Is there any further discussion?
I'm finding, is that a question?
Oh, yeah, we have to know the funds, absolutely. Where would you like this to come out of, Kevin?
Well, it's gonna come out of sales tax.
Okay. All right, any further discussion?
Well, what happened to four and five under exclusion? Services related to the acquisition of additional right-of-way or easements and construction staking. We're pulling three and we're leaving one and two, which is construction, engineering and geotechnical investigations and pavement design analysis.
We're changing, we're pulling on page two, that, under the payment provisions. I don't know, do you want to revise it and bring it to us?
Yeah, I think...
How about if you bring it to us with a new contract for one and two at the next meeting, is that all right?
That'd be perfect.
Thank you very much.
At any point, if you decide you would like to add that services for right-of-way.
Right-of-way.
That stuff, it can, I mean, we'll just add it through, yeah.
So you'll get a missing amendment agreement. Are you okay with withdrawing your...
Yes.
For the moment? Okay. So come back next time.
Very good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
All that to come back.
Yeah, all that.
On the number three, when you made that motion, I don't believe, I could be wrong, but I don't think we said where that was coming from.
Sales tax.
Did we?
Number three?
The, the, well, the road.
Dust control? Yeah, she did.
You did? Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
But don't start asking. Okay, so we will see that again next time? All right, next item is Don Kramer with the dinosaur.
Yeah.
Did you bring your dinosaur with you?
No, it was too big, can't carry it. I'm Don Kramer, Kramer Oil Company, and I certainly thank you for letting me be a part of your meeting tonight. Uh, and the reason why that I'm here is that Kramer Oil, we're always trying to improve our locations and make them look nice as we can. And one of the things we'd like to do on the west side of Marysville by our CJ Express convenience store is place another dinosaur at that location. And what I'm here for is to ask the city permission that we could place it on their property.
It looks great.
Well, thank you. You'll have a sheet and pictures of where we'd like to place this dinosaur. We'd like to have it done by Mother's Day if we can, so I've already contacted DigSafe so they can be checking out the site. And it, uh, it will be just a little bit south of the present sign that we have, price sign that we have there. It will not interfere with the visual of looking at traffic from east or west. And, uh, is there any other questions?
I was just going to ask you, I know that you guys are purchasing a black squirrel.
Yes.
And so do you have any idea where that's gonna play out?
It will, uh, right east of the Gas Island, the North Gas Island. Behind it towards the store will, there's a electrical box there and there's a air pump. And it'll go in that area. That is the only area that we have left that is our property.
Close to the entrance then?
Out there in front of where it go, yes.
So close to the entrance.
We didn't want it too close to the dinosaur to take away from the dinosaur or give to the squirrel, so this is why we pulled it back.
Okay, I didn't know you were gonna have a menagerie right there.
No, no. So...
Move to approve the right-of-way permission.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
That looks great.
Yep.
That was much easier, okay. And Jeff Sandstrom, he is not here. He has proposed a street closing. I had a couple of questions.
Yes.
Um, you put those out for me. So there's a map of what he's proposing. I had asked Debbie, did you get ahold of Patty Larkin?
Got ahold of her.
Okay, I've talked to Patty and she has no issue. Okay, I emailed and here's what I heard. We should not have anything going on.
He's on the table.
Okay, so my concern was just to ask him, I guess when I read the article in the, um, in the package, it said it might affect the Larkins, so I wanted to make sure the Larkins were okay. And then I knew the school construction was gonna start, so I just wanted to make sure the school wasn't opposed to blocking off that street for that auction. So obviously Debbie got back and there's a response, so I don't think there's a problem from the people.
I had a question. It says 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. I mean, are they gonna have actual auction trailers in the street?
He said he would like to block it with vehicles, yeah. That would be okay with the council otherwise.
And my other thought was, if you look at that on the map where it wraps around the Spring Street, I almost wonder if it wouldn't be, I guess, the house on the corner, I don't know who lives in this house on the inside of that curve.
They're gone.
Okay. Might, might be worth looking at blocking it along Spring Street around the curve so people don't come around the corner and then...
He wanted to leave that for some people attending the auction. They would have room on that corner.
Parking.
And be able to turn around, it's wide up on the corner.
That's what I was concerned about. People would come around that corner and then you're getting up with a situation where people can't turn around.
They want, did it there so there would be room to turn around.
They're not worried about it, I guess, okay.
Move to approve the request.
Mr. Kirboli? I don't wanna have a rough hand.
A second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh.
Can I make one request? I gave you each four pages, total of 48 pages. Could Deb collect those and I'll pick them up tomorrow at the city hall?
Oh, sure.
I might, I might make those places. Thank you.
So, make sure you give those, Debbie, up to me. All right, at this point in time, we need to, I would entertain a motion to recess the city council meeting.
I had a mayor move to recess the city council meeting, order the public building commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh, all right.
We're gonna be back in.
Now, we will call to order the public building commission. Roll call, please.
Beckman?
Yep.
Kasinger?
Yep.
Boss?
Present.
Akis?
Present.
Fry?
Yep.
Gross?
Present.
Troller?
Yes.
Present.
Eight oh, we have one item there is for the audit related to the PBC. For payment. Want to entertain a motion?
Move to approve the $400 audit payment.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh. I would entertain a motion of adjournment for the PBC.
Move to adjourn the public building commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh, and now we are resuming the regular order of business. I am not aware of any notices or hearings. Anybody? Okay, the next item is a consent agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I had a question about the garden club annual donation. Do we know how that's spent or where?
Annie is in our audience. Annie, we don't mean to put you on the spot, but the annual donation to the garden club, can you tell us where, what that goes toward? Do you actually...
It goes to care from the City Park Garden.
Is it, is it plans or is it molds or all combinations?
All, anybody.
Okay, do you give the, a recap of it at the end of the year or anything? Of what it's spent on?
No. I mean, because we buy, um, for our garden also the money.
Okay.
The money gets back into the community.
Oh, I'm sure it does, because I know service-wise, it's much more, but I was just wondering if you have ever, you know, said, when you make your request, like on travel and tourism, when they make a request, they say what it's supposed to be used for or what they used it for. So, I think just in the future, if you just recap, when you keep coming with requests next year, just say, this is what we did last year.
I don't think you really need to be specific on the numbers.
Oh, yeah.
Mainly, you can just brag.
That's true.
It does seem nice year after year after year.
You can bring pictures, I don't know.
Yeah, pictures are worth a hundred words.
But I just think it'd be nice, you know, to just say, this is what we did last year, requesting it again, okay? Is that sufficient, Darlene?
Mm-hmm, yes, and pictures would be nice.
I know, we need to brag them up a little bit for all the stuff they do for our community. Okay, so there was a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh. All right, the next item is our appropriations ordinance.
Move to approve appropriations ordinance number 3625.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Beckman? Beckman?
Yes.
Kasinger?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Akis?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Troller?
Yes.
Thron?
Yes.
Eight zero.
So, we can all say yes again. Okay, moving on to Rick's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first item here really is information. Uh, it's the award letter from KDOT for the crosswalk enhancements that was applied for with the TA. Debbie also mentioned there were some things that needed to be done. That was a DUNZ and a SAM registration and those were taken care of already, actually the day we got the award, those were sent in. And then I've also attached an announcement of the awards, this came from a public notice. And you can see, of course, the school is listed as the very last one. They also got their SRTS planning grant on that, which was a separate grant, but under the same program and really not connected with the, uh, crosswalk enhancements. At such time, if and when the state funds a fiscal year 18 Clink project, we'll want to talk about with BG about incorporating this project into that, even though they would be separately funded. And I think you're aware, I sent you some information or advice a week or so ago that, this is a normal time for Clink awards to go, or not awards, but the program to open up. That's probably not gonna happen until June. And so, uh, I don't know what's gonna happen. I, I did, just as a matter of information for you, you have a bulletin, looks like this, in front of you. You may have noticed on the last appropriation ordinance, we had a membership for Kansas Municipal Utilities. And this, we get a weekly newsletter on this, and this one was very informative. This is about the legislature coming back in and what they're facing, and you can see the...
Short form.
Short form. They're taking it from KDOT.
Yep.
Both years.
I've seen that.
And I don't know...
KDOT and schools.
If you saw last week, uh, the projects that were delayed, they were not Clink projects, they were transportation projects. So, we have no idea. We may know sooner than June if they're gonna do the Clink awards. So, just want, take it home and read that, this is very interesting, good information. This gives you a little more understanding than what you catch on the news. It's a little more detailed than a 30-second clip on Channel 13.
On that, though, is, is, once it's been awarded, does the general rule, does it get rescinded?
I've never known one to be rescinded.
But we've never had this dire budget straits for this long before either, have we?
Not from the state, no.
Right. You have money short everywhere.
They'll be sending, uh, they'll eventually send out a contract and noticeable award, et cetera, et cetera.
The ones that they listed on there, they were, uh, they were, none of them were Clink projects, so they were...
TA projects.
Yeah, these are all TA projects.
GIs.
I guess we should be glad we're doing our GI now.
There you go.
Well, these weren't, no, the ones listed, these were not GI projects, these are all...
Well, these weren't.
No, these are all transportation enhancement projects.
Yeah, they had them in two different categories. Do you remember what they were? That, on that, what you said.
No, the one I've got it.
There were two different categories, but...
I just, on page, whatever that is, 63, it lists the cities and the federal requests and their local match. Uh, on the flush tank project, uh, there's about six pages of plans that are on there. It's, you don't have any objections or changes that need to be done, and we'd like to do is just go ahead and proceed to bid.
Just the five of them, correct?
Just these five, yes. And, uh, talk with Tony, we'll try to get it, an ad in the paper tomorrow, and we'll get more response from mailing to the bidders than we do from the paper, but...
Well, there's actually six, 'cause you added Mason. You see the six?
Yeah, we did, right, there's five flush tanks and one of them is a manhole, we're moving a manhole.
Yeah.
On Mason's street, yeah. Five flush tanks and moving a manhole.
Do we, do we need a motion?
Yeah.
Sure, that's fine.
I move that, that, uh, we solicit bids for the project, for the flush tank project.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nope.
And, um, as you know, we'd informed, I think maybe back during the workshop in March, about the old water truck that has the big water tank on it. Engine is shot, cost about $5,000 to replace. So, Gary's been looking around on Purple Wave and calling places, and he did find one that's listed on Purple Wave. It's a 1985 International 1754 cabin chassis. It's located in Downs, Kansas, and he called and talked to the owners. It's actually a farm truck and not some kind of a company. Uh, it has a rebuilt engine and transmission, both which have less than 10,000 miles use on them. There's a Purple Wave number, if you want to go on and check it out, just pull up Purple Wave and type that number in, and it'll bring the truck up, and you can click on all the pictures. These are about four of the pictures. I wanted to get one kind of a different view on each one. Uh, you'll notice inside the cab, it looks kinda dirty, it's, that's grain, this was a grain truck. If you've grown up on a farm like Todd did, that grain gets everywhere. Might, might be able to clean it off, I don't know. Um, the, uh, I don't know, the bid on this one, uh, the auction ends Wednesday. Uh, I talked, I sent the guys down there, they looked at it. Adele and Sam went down to look at it. They felt it's, uh, you know, you can get it for less than $2,000, they thought it'd be a good deal. Wouldn't take a lot of work to put the, uh, the flat bed on it and then put the tank on it. The PTO doesn't work, that's the reason the farm decided not to work it, because they had a, they had a bed on it and they couldn't lift it with the PTO broke, so they just decided to go ahead and sell it.
Does the, uh, do they know what the rebuilt engine and transmission, it still has warranty on it?
No, I, no, we don't. I'm, I'm going to assumption they're done because everything on here is sold as is.
From past experiences, rebuilt engines, they can last forever or...
Go down...
Ten miles.
Yeah.
It's a $625 right now, I mean...
Yeah, I didn't check it today. That price will go up tomorrow.
It'll, it'll go up, but I think it'll go $102.
Yeah. So, uh, you know, like to permission the bid on that. Uh, if you want to spend more money, there is a 2004 Kenworth Pepsi truck sitting over at six in the center, I guess it's still there.
Yeah, it's still there.
Nine, $9,500, six-speed, 250 horse, 106,000 miles. The problem there is the box would have to be removed, a new bid would have to come up. Uh, I think Sam said probably cost about $1,000 for steel and everything to get the bed up above the wheels. And the old water truck that we have is an old Pepsi truck.
I remember we don't even drive this. It gets used for a rental. This is the need, but you don't...
Right.
It doesn't even need it to, I mean...
I think we only have one.
And that's why you guys thought this was probably a fairly good deal.
How many gallons is that water tank?
I think it's, uh, over 1,000, I think.
So, I thought it was 1,200 gallons.
Four times.
Can it, can it? Is it possible for us to remove it or add it in one of the dump trucks? I mean, if we have to?
Well, the problem is, you'd be putting it on, taking it off all the time.
I mean, that's...
It's why it needs, I think they're, well, I think that's more trouble than it's worth.
Yeah, 'cause they use that truck for water and the tree, the little trees down along the, the city park down here and...
You're not gonna do that for many times before you're...
Trees downtown.
You've been happy to spend $2,000.
You take the labor to...
Yeah, the labor and the time.
The time to go, oh, this is a bad idea.
So...
They use that truck, I know, when they dump some water out of it for cleaning storm sewers and stuff too, so...
Yeah, I think we did here on the alley, maybe.
All right.
And fire truck.
I move to approve, we give permission, would you be doing the bidding, Rick?
Yeah.
On the, uh, Purple Wave truck, um, up to a maximum of $2,000 exclusive of the 10% buyer's premium.
Second.
I'd take it out of the equipment reserve fund.
So, you're not gonna take a capital out, are you? You want MER? That's okay, you can take your MER.
Well, I'm not crazy about always using it, but this is, this is a vehicle, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's appropriate to do it on a vehicle.
MER is fine. Any further discussion?
Discussion, please, Mayor.
Yes.
It says here, there's a 10% buyer's premium on top of the winning bid.
Yes.
How can we in this exclude it? How can we just say we're gonna exclude this?
Exclusive of it, meaning bid up to $2,000, accepting that at that price, you would also have to pay $200 for it.
Right.
So, it's actually given authority for $2,200, hence the exclusive.
So, up to 22, you would rather have him say up to $2,200?
Would you rather me say up to, including buyer's premium, up to $2,200?
You did that.
I meant my emotion to read, up to $2,200, including the buyer's premium.
Okay.
Think you can second that?
I'll agree.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Seven one, okay. All right.
And the fourth one is a, fourth item there is a payroll comparison, uh, for 2015, 2016. The ending dates, you'll notice up on the top left corner, they are slightly different. It's because the first one that Scott ran on the dates, mark 31, there's five payrolls in one, I'm sorry, six, uh, six in one, seven in the other. So, this gets us to seven payrolls, and there's very little difference you can see. Bottom line, total in hours, 126 and a quarter hours above last year, dollars, $2,700 and $22.58 above last year, so pretty close, pretty tight. Uh, brush dumping. I had a contractor for Westar, it's called Wright Tree Service, they're out of Iowa. Uh, they're gonna be in the area, they are not doing work in Marysville, but they are in the area. As of last week, they were up in the Oquito area. Uh, they'll be around this area for two to three months, trimming trees, looking for a place to dump chips and branches. Uh, they were asking if it'd be okay to use our site. They would be willing to pay a fee, I kinda told them we really didn't like a lot of people from out of town dumping out there. Uh, they have an F-650 dump truck that holds about six to 10 yards per load. Their rep that came in stated typical dump fees are $10 to $20 per load. I suggested that they check with the Marshall County Landfield as a site to dump and maybe check with the local implement dealers, maybe they know some farmers that need some chips or something on, on some farm ground. I also checked with the appraiser's office on whether or not charging a feed and dump out there would cause us a problem. I was told that as long as we're not making a profit on it, and it wasn't a permanent operation, it wouldn't be a problem with county taxes on that. So, the question is, does the council want to allow this company to dump chips and branches from out of town at the site, and if so, do you want, would you like to be charged?
Has he given the idea how many loads he'd be talking about? I mean, 10 a day or one a day?
Probably two or three a day, I think. It just depends on...
Pretty big loads, I imagine, it's chips.
Well, it's an F-650.
Two or three.
And they would be full. Depending on how many trees they do and where they're at, yes.
What's the labor cost for us to have the dump open for a whole day?
Uh, it's about, we're paying about $11 an hour. We would, this, we would issue them a key. We'd issue a key.
Well, then how would we monitor how much they dump then?[1508.87]
Do we want to charge a flat daily fee for all the days they have the key?
I was going to say, because there's no way you can monitor it if they have a key.
These guys are making huge margins. I don't feel too bad.
You could, you could charge.
These are locals.
You could charge a daily fee. By the way, yeah, it's stuff to monitor. I mean, you got the honor system, but then that just depends on how honest they are.
We're not rushing over the coals.
These guys seem to be fairly reputable, but.
We wouldn't rush them over the coals. Twenty dollars a load. We're not allowed to make a profit on it, so it's not like we're going to come out ahead on this. I don't think we ought to be taking somebody else's, I don't think we should be putting that in there. If you recall, when we were trying to decide if we were going to issue keys to the dump to contractors who come into our city from Seneca to use our dump to dump the limbs, and that was stuff they were trimming here in Marysville, and we decided not to let them do that. And this is a guy coming out of where? Wichita? Where's he coming out of?
Iowa.
He's coming out of Iowa, and he's dumping his stuff out here on land that we need to use. We don't know how much. We're not allowed to make a profit, so I don't think, I don't think we're coming out ahead on it.
What if we said fifty dollars a day on loaded dumping?
No.
While you have the key.
If he's doing twenty, if we, if we charge twenty dollars a load, three loads is sixty dollars.
Right.
We're not anywhere near meeting, letting him, turn him loose to do what he's got of loading there.
But we, but we can't make a profit. How you do that accounting, of course, is going to vary, but.
We can't make a profit, so what is the advantage to us? Just to be, just to be good neighbors to Oquito or wherever? We're not going to come out ahead on us, as far as I'm concerned.
What will happen to those wood chips?
They'll find another home for them.
People come out and. We actually have a pile under.
It depends on what they're chipping up somewhere.
Is there a lot of demand?
Chipping up the stuff with the bug there.
There's a lot of demand.
Yeah. Why you'd want to do that with pine bores in the wood? I don't know why you'd even take a chance.
Brush and chips.
It's chips and branches, you guys.
Chip and, yeah.
And we have to manage it out there, so it's not like we don't do anything.
There's pine bores. I wouldn't take any of that stuff and put it anywhere near anything on my property or anybody's property who wants to save their trees.
Maybe fifty's too low. I don't know. I'm just fiddle on here.
What'd you say, about five loads? Maybe it's, depends on.
How many days do you say they'd be in the area?
They're going to be around for two or three months.
No!
Oh, that'd be a lot.
Well, that'd add up already. No, we.
I don't know if we want to put that responsibility on our, our dump employee.
I think that's going to come into the deal of making a profit eventually.
Well, yeah, I.
They're, they're usually, they're usually going to haul.
One load a day, five days a week, so it's a hundred dollars a week.
They're, they're going to haul one load a day, and they're going to come in.
A hundred dollars a week would subsidize enough where it would offset our expenses where we wouldn't make a profit. I think a hundred dollars a week would be okay.
I, I, but our, but you, our staff person might be working really hard just to keep track of these people. I mean, two or three months, they're working here two or three months.
But it'd be there anyway.
I think you're going to have, somebody's going to have to, they're not going to be able to dump it in the pile, the nice pile that's kept out there.
No, our person's going to be busy.
Somebody's going to have to move it around.
You're right. Get pushed up. But then, on the other hand, days that the weather's raining and storming, they're not going to be out cutting either.
No.
I don't see this incentive for Marysville to take this at all. And trees get cut down because they're diseased? I don't know if they're just talking about trees.
Westar doesn't cut, Westar doesn't cut down trees because they're diseased. They cut them because they're in their lines.
This, this is a utility trimming.
Yes, okay, I get that too. I get that. But three months' worth, they're going to make the best of the time that they have, and they're not going to take one, two, or three loads to the dump. I'll bet you ten, it's not unexpected that they would dump at least ten loads out there a day. Add that up.
No, they're not, Vicky. They're not going to drive in.
It's not just Oquito.
They're not going to drive in from out there to dump a load and go back.
They're, they're trying to find different areas to dump, and this is, their idea for here is when they're on the outskirts of this area, of this area, this would be the closest they'd go to. They're trying to line up different areas to dump.
They don't have to drive as far.
And it makes sense to give them a key, so we're not constantly monitoring that. All right, I move to approve. We offer them the key to use for a fee of one hundred and fifty dollars a week, but if they use it an eighth day, that's the second week, so whole weeks only, for as long as they need it. But we have to get the key back.
Is that Monday through Saturday, or Monday through Friday?
They won't work on the weekends, so I just say blanket it by the seven day week. I think it's simple, it's clean. If we can rationalize it, because it's thirty dollars a load, if they do one a day, we'll spend that much in having somebody out there. If they don't want to do it, they'll take it somewhere else.
Somebody said two to three loads a day. I knew you, I knew you don't.
It'll vary. They may, but they may not do it for two days. It's a lot easier just to say a week, I think, than just count loads.
I can see where it would be handy for them, but I, I just, I don't know.
Second.
I just need to figure out that's enough. That's why.
Yeah, I think that, to me, that strikes the balance between not, not profiting, but making it, making them understand that it is going to take extra work for our staff.
Do we have the option if it just becomes unmanageable?
You've given permission.
I don't, I don't think we do.
Discussion?
Yes.
Do we have our dump open five days a week now? Are we going to open it to accommodate them? So that's more.
Well, yeah, the key. We'd give them a key.
Totally understood.
But that, these guys aren't going to, they're a big deal. They aren't going to go drive by Joe Schmo's house and offer to cut his trees, and they're going to do it on Sunday. These are going to do their thing with Westar and move on.
Yeah, you guys have not chosen to open it up five days a week. Besides that, we're not certain to certain hours, so anyhow.
Okay, we have a motion to charge them a hundred and fifty dollars per week and give them a key. First and second. Okay, is, are we ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Aye.
They're here at the house.
All right, another one. Go Debbie.
Baikman?
Yes.
B. Singer?
No.
Boss?
No.
E. Kiss?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Gross?
No.
Troller?
No.
Throm?
Yes.
I vote no on this. Four five.
Again.
I got to vote twice today.
Okay, so what are, what's, where are we?
I'll just tell them no.
Tell them we're not interested in their dumping.
I'll just tell them, they're going to love it.
I think it is, this way it's consistent. I've actually told other people that if you're not cutting in Marysville, you can't dump in Marysville, so I think it's consistent.
Now, what if they're cutting in the median area, we'll let them in then?
Well, but they're staying here.
We said in Marysville.
Oh, they are staying.
They are staying here.
They will be spending sales tax money here.
Yeah.
Bed tax.
But we can't make a profit.
You've got a chance.
But we can't make a profit, Keith.
How do you know that? You're foreseeing the future. You can't do that.
Okay, well, we already voted, and we're going to move on to number six.
Item number six is the Ferris mower. There's some pictures, I'm sorry, there's one picture of the mower. This is a fifty-two inch deck. This is one of the mowers that Dale says he needs of the size deck. Basically, it requires a new spark plug to be installed every time, constantly changing oil. It's a good mower. He'd like to keep it, but the engine either needs to be replaced or repaired. We have two bids. There was about a difference of twenty-three dollars between rebuilding or replacing. We're recommending going ahead replacing the new engine for twenty-six hundred ninety-four dollars and seventy-six cents.
Coming out of his budget?
Yeah, I think we'd take it out, equipment replacement and repair instead of M E R. Yeah, there's a two-year warranty on.
On the engine?
On the new mower, on the new. On the engine, on the new engine.
Yep.
If you're on the rebuild, you're only going to get a warranty on the labor.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to purchase the new engine with the money coming out of Dale's budget, parks, for two thousand six hundred ninety-four dollars and seventy-six cents.
My second. Any further discussion?
Question, so we just, we just bought a new mower. How much was that? I'm just, I'm just trying to.
Sixty-nine fifty, I think.
About seven thousand.
Seven thousand, so, but, okay, so I'm just.
That was an expensive mower.
But that was a small deck.
That was a smaller deck.
This is a bigger deck.
I said, for some reason, nine, almost ten thousand, six in my mind, bought that.
You're, you're answering my question. Okay. So we're still, if he likes it, if it's working.
I know he wants it.
Yeah, okay.
For the smaller deck, so they can get.
Okay, there's a motion to go with the, they're replacing the engine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Seven one. And next item?
There's a waiver request from Fred and Nancy Fincham Motors at Car Wash there at Nineteenth Carolina, requesting waiver of a sewer tap fee of six hundred and twenty dollars to connect car wash to the sewer system. Until the K season highway project started, really, nobody knew that they were connected to the storm drain instead of sanitary sewer. Fred did advise, they've always paid a sewer charge on their water bill, and now they're connecting. Would they consider waiving connection fee or correcting the situation? Today, they were up there, and there's about a six-inch line that comes out of the south side of the slab there where the outdoor bay is, which everybody thought was a connection. And then they connect on it and ran a new one over to go out in the, in the streets, cut, it's closed. David informed me late this afternoon, come to find out that that's not even their tap. So, that they're still on the storm sewer, so it looks like Canover Electric's going to be digging around up there, trying to find out where they're connected. We know, pretty sure that they are on storm sewer. I was out there last week with Tony Aller, and we looked at the storm drain, that's there right across from the Banks parking lot, and there was water in there. We went up to the corner, went on the southeast corner, right there by the car wash. That was dry as a bone. So we know for sure they're connected somewhere. So they're going to have to find out where it's connected to the storm drain to get it off. They, they thought that that one pipe coming out, it was it, but we'll find out it wasn't.
So the outdoor drain went where?
We don't know. David said that little piece, they left a little piece of pipe. David, if I understand right, said they pulled that out. It was just buried underground somewhere. So we don't even know if it drains anything, so. I'm thinking it must drain that outdoor bay, maybe. They just drained it out, so. They've got to find where it's connected to the sewer. I think what he said, they're going to bring their cameras in and run it down in one of the bays, and see if they can trace it out there and see where it goes.
Well, didn't, when this all started, didn't Kent test it and say that he knew it? Went to the sewer, it went to the storm sewer rather than?
Well, he had suspicion that did.
I thought he did some dye thing to prove that.
Well, they did that last week. They, they checked the sewer, sanitary, and they put dye on it, and it didn't go. And they didn't trace the dye in the sanitary sewer. So they tried to confirm that it was on the sanitary.
So they don't know where it is?
I mean, that it was on the storm drain, so.
So do you want to waive the sewer tap fee, no matter where, however they find it, and they can hook up?
Moved away the sewer tap fee of six hundred and twenty dollars to connect the car wash at Nineteenth Carolina.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh?
Let's go ahead, Mayor.
All right. Debbie, do you have anything?
The only thing, if you do want to discuss stump hours, opening it up for the season, we've had a lot of calls, and then, I know this last week.
Is this normally when we do it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're just back to Wednesday and weekends.
You don't know, when we did it last year.
Well, it was around this time.
Yeah, it saves right on another day.
Yeah, we're pushing, we're pushing it late in the season to get it open.
So you want to, we usually have it open, what, four to six, Monday through Friday, and one to five, Saturday and Sunday? Do we want to go back to that now? Effectively pick a date?
Probably immediately, as soon as we can.
Like tomorrow? Do we have enough?
Well, Derek Gary's maybe going to need a day or two to get, yes.
It's going to rain the next couple of days, so.
We'll have two employees, it'll be important now.
I'd make it effective Thursday.
Thursday.
Do you want to make that motion?
If the storm comes like it's supposed to tomorrow, we'll need to dump open.
Yeah.
Do you want to make the motion?
Move, make a motion. We open up the city dump, seven days a week, four to six, Monday through Friday, and one to five, Saturday and Sunday.
Effective Thursday?
Effective Thursday, whatever that's going to be.
The twenty-eighth?
Yeah. Unless we get the storm, and then, you know, it'll be open anyway.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I just got, I got one. What if that Wright's Tree Service truck comes in and dumps one of the dumps open?
There'll be an employee there.
Jim, are we going to check? Nobody has Iowa plates. I mean, how, how do we keep them out? I think we don't restrict it during open hours, right?
Well, they monitor how many people come through.
Yeah.
So I guess when you think, if they have, you have a big commercial truck come in, you would say.
They have a sign on the side of it telling you what it is.
Yeah. I mean, I, that would be them to stop them. I, I'm just, that's what I would expect, because I do sit there and monitor them.
Have we ever stopped anybody? Have we ever gone, you, out?
Yeah.
If they're dumping material, we have. If they're dumping something, they're not allowed to.
But have we communicated that, kind of that, our policy to, to the people that work there, that we want it?
They know. They're pretty good at watching them.
Okay.
No plastic bags, no lumber.
No, I just.
We can get dinged for that stuff.
Right.
I, I guess if they show up during that time, it is what it is. It's probably not worth their time to try to hit those windows and do it. I don't think we really need to put it on our crew out there to be.
Well, we just want that.
Confronting big trucks.
Well, if it's a huge truck full of stuff that says Iowa, I think they could ask a question.
We could advise them of it, just to be aware of it.
Just let us know.
Just a reasonable test. I'm not asking them to check everybody.
Let them know, let them know.
If they're communicating with what our policy is, yes. So, so Rick says they are communicating our policies. Okay, we have a motion and a second?
What's the motion now? Let me get this right.
To begin, beginning on the twenty-eighth, to be open Monday through Friday, four to six, and Saturday, Sunday, one to five.
The city dump?
City dump.
Yes.
And we just want to know not to charge somebody to dump there?
That, this is for our city residents.
City residents.
They check your driver's license.
We could be charging somebody the same time, same timeframe for a hundred and fifty dollars a week.
But they were our residents. This is our city dump.
That's why.
We'd be bringing Iowa money back to Marysville.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh my goodness, eight oh. I was kind of surprised there. Okay. Is that all, Debbie? All right, before we start our standing committees, I wanted to make two comments. One is that there is that chicken barbecue on Mother's Day that supports the Kestner Block maintenance fund, and I believe we as a council should work that. And I also think we should ask, we will be volunteering, and I also think we should ask our employees, John Howard and Brad, Brad to volunteer that day, since it helps provide. You guys in favor of that? Makes sense?
What day is this, Madam Mayor?
It is Mother's Day, which is May eighth. It'll do the barbecue, and I think it runs from, if I was to guess, ten to two. Cindy, do you know?
She, my email for me to come work was eight to two.
Eight to two.
Eight to two, she'll take, she'll take a couple of hours.
Okay, so I, I'm not coming till after church. I'm going to come noon to two, but eight to two, you don't have to work that whole, but you need to show up, and let Ally know that you're coming, okay? Or you can let Debbie know.
Yeah, they're set up in the morning, so there's stuff to do.
Yeah. So if you want to let Debbie know what hours you'd be working, so Ally knows who she can count on.
I think you guys should definitely do that. I'm out of town that weekend, but you guys should.
I think it's a great community service project for our, for our council to be out amongst the people, so. And the only other thing I wanted to make a comment on is with the new city administrator coming on board, I don't think we should hire any full-time employees at this point in time until after we have a new city administrator on staff that can evaluate our staffing needs. Are you guys okay with that? I'm okay with seasonal, just no more full-time at this time.
I think we could, I don't see anybody on the horizon.
I just wanted to kind of cover that.
Okay.
And.
I think it's probably questionable to do that, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we don't want to set him, set him or her up for hiring, taking somebody that we hire on a short-term basis. So anyway, so we won't do any full-time hiring until they come on board. And then, now I'm ready for standing committee, street, water and wastewater, parks and rec.
Yeah, did Tree Board ever come? Have they looked at the trees in Park yet?
They did.
I, I missed that. What did they decide?
What's Friday? Dale met with them as well, as well as two or three of the others' employees, and Kim went through and showed them specific trees that were diseased or dying.
And how, how many were there?
I don't know, but she went, I got there kind of at the tail end, but she specifically told them which trees needed to come out. She recommended for every two trees that they take out, they plant one. She recommended putting some decorative trees around the gazebo area and at the south, south corner of the park to bring more color. She wants to recommend colorful trees that have color out there. So they went around, and Dale said that his employees were, were capable for the ones that she specifically pointed out needed to be taken out, that he could do it. And I think in the report this week, it showed that he took out two of those trees on the weekly reports. So they went around together, and Dale is going to come up with a plan, a long-term plan, of what needs to be done, both from a pruning standpoint and, and what other trees need to be taken out, what trees need to be replanted. And it's going to be based on, you know, that they try to determine how many trees of a certain type are in the city and what's best. Yeah. But it's good that they're starting the process. They talked a lot about trimming the trees in the city park too, that getting, getting an arborist in, because a lot of those trees high up need to be trimmed, thinned out. So I think Dale's working on it.
Is she, are they part of the forestry too?
Yes.
Kansas?
She's.
She is. What's her title?
Forestry.
Forestry do that?
So they did meet with Dale and his staff, so they're working on it, so. And he's, and, and we asked him to bring something back to the council for a plan going forward, so. But good question. Anything else?
Have we ever sprayed for mosquitoes in Marysville?
Not since I've been here.
No. I noticed that. Mosquito dunks and water where it stands a lot.
Certainly over here by the levee and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or by the track.
Tracks and stuff.
And last year there was some down by the gardens, there was standing water, so we treat that.
For the dunks.
I just noticed.
South 14th ditch down there, by the garden, and used to be some over near neighborhood down there. Third Walnut and various places around there.
Is that what you were concerned about standing water?
Uh, yes, I've noticed a lot of cities are now talking about spraying, possibly spraying because of the Zika mosquito. Yes, there's one case so far in Kansas.
That's an expensive proposition. You can either contract it out, or you purchase the equipment. Equipment would probably cost you 15, 20,000, maybe 25.
Maybe the state will take care of that.
Let's just try to recognize our mosquitoes that come across the border. Okay.
On parks, any word on the dog park?
Oh, yeah.
Nathan's, he's supposed to work on Tony Costdown. He said he'd come back as soon as he gets something.
Okay, and Baby Depot is still being painted, right?
It's painting every weekend that it's dry for two days.
Done by Mother's Day, maybe?
No. I mean, you have to have two days in a row of sunshine because it's a wood surface. And I looked up, and it has to be dry a day, and you have to paint, and then it has to be dry so long before you can.
Can Alicia group tint it or something?
But it's making progress. You should go look at it.
It is. It does look better. The green really pops. It's nice.
Okay.
It's going to set it out.
So it's taking a little bit longer project than we ever imagined.
That's how those work.
And I feel rather guilty that I suggested, but it will look very nice. But you know, when we get two days, we try to, some, whatever volunteers are available, we try to go down there. But we haven't had two sunny days in a while. We were painting last weekend, so we were making progress. Nick Stoll got stuck up in his bucket truck. His hydraulics went out. But we had to have the bucket truck to get to that arc, that top of the arch on the south and the north side. So we're grateful he has a bucket truck. So, okay. Is that all?
Yes.
I got one more question on Parks and Recs. When is the swimming pool supposed to start filling up, full up?
They're scrubbing on it right now, or the day they work.
They're cleaning it.
They're cleaning around it this weekend, I know.
Okay, cemetery and airport. I just wanted to make sure we have our updated list posted for Memorial Day. Is that updated list up, Rick, for people to locate graves? He did put it in?
Dale will have that ready.
Awesome. I just want to make sure before Memorial Day came.
Other question. Do we give back all the hangar leases or just about?
Just, yeah, almost.
Almost.
Not all, close.
Did anybody register any concerns or complaints about the changes?
We do have a little bit of concern on the legal description, which I'm working with David and probably the attorney on. About those recommendations seem right, so.
Well, I think what the actual agreement didn't say, the specifics were footage in the agreement.
That's why.
I have a question on airport too, about the people that wanted an airport to put a plane in. Have we located a hangar for them?
Nothing's changed since what we brought up last time.
Have we contacted those people to tell them we're working on getting them a space? Has anybody even contacted them?
I put him in touch with the only person that had a space, and that person refused to rent, either purchase it for $25,000 or forget it. That's what he was told. Space is not for rent, it's for sale for $25,000.
Or he can build one.
But I believe that person has also been in touch with another hangar owner out there too. So it's still maybe in the works.
Okay, where do we stand? We're required by FAA regulation that, one, not to have anything stored on that airport except airplanes and airplane parts. And there are hangers out there with stuff in it, and if they have stuff in it that doesn't relate to airplane or air part, or airplane or airplane parts, then they are to relinquish their space to a person who wants to use it as a hangar. Now, we're kind of in a strange situation because we own the land, but we don't own the buildings. But we have some responsibility here, and where do we stand there, Rick?
I suppose that would be a legal matter. You could take legal action against that owner to force him to rent it, I suppose, if you really want to go that far.
Need to talk to our legal counsel about it. And that's question. Second one is where do we stand on the damage to the runway? Where do we stand on that issue?
As I've advised previously, the next court dates May 16th.
May 16th?
Yes.
Thank you, I was unaware.
All right, anything else?
Police and fire? I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. On police and fire, I have a question about police. I keep seeing where we get charged for training through FBI LIDA. Is that required of our police officers? And we have a $1,600 hit on, or $1,000 maybe on one of those trainings. I don't think I know what that is. Do you?
Law enforcement executive development academy, of which our chief is a graduate.
So is that called training?
So he's a graduate, so it's done.
I'm not sure specifically which one you're referring to.
Is it considered training, or is it considered like an organization that belongs to, which is it?
Well, they offer both. They offer training.
Did Officer Oldy, Officer Oldy attend that?
It was Chief Ackerman. Three officers went to training this past two weeks. The charges, the bills for those are in our packet, that were in our box for frivolous.
Appropriation.
It may have been a LIDA-sponsored one, yeah. They offer training too.
Some of it, some.
Yeah, some of it.
I'm not talking about those. I saw where they went to different ones. I'm talking about where the chief went. Is that a seminar? Is it a convention? Is it what, is it, is it training? Is it, what is it?
Well, I don't know. I could have got that question, if you'd asked today when you were in, I could have got that answered for you.
Did you see me? I had my hand up like this for, and I answered a question, and everybody else asked. I went like that again for my turn, and you left. I told you I wanted to ask you a question about that.
Okay, so Chief will bring back whether it's an organization or if it's a type of training for him.
I'm going to have to talk to the chief to find out. Get a question.
That's fine, that's fine. All right.
Never mind, we'll check with the chief, darling.
Admin and finance? We have no appointments or wage determinations that I know of. The city attorney is not present, and we are done with executive sessions as far as I'm concerned for today. Roundtable. I went to the Mayoral Summit last week. Well, Friday and Saturday, I'm sorry, yeah, Friday and Saturday. And there was some great information. I wish all of you would have been there with me. But they really talked about the importance of strategic planning. They presented as a strategic plan is our pathway to success. That's how we judge how we're doing. And we need to be specific, we need to be unified, we need to start somewhere. So I really think at the workshop, we need to start thinking of a two-year plan, a five-year plan, and a 10-year plan. We can start with just a streak if you want to start with that, but we need to start with something. And, you know, we can think what we want, and then when the city administrator comes, we can think again. But I think we need to start planning that. Also, another section was called translating your plan into a budget. And they said the first question should be asked of the council. And the council needs to communicate to the administration what service the city wants to cut, what, or decrease, which, what we want to increase, and what we want the mill levy to do. We're supposed to communicate that information to the staff, and the staff works according to what we believe. And I don't think that's always been done in the past. And, so the city of Manhattan gave the presentation, and they have a mission statement. They have priorities for 2016, and that was the council's, and I think that's what we need to start working on. What is our, what is our city's mission statement? What are our priorities for 2016, so we can see if we succeed in what we think is important. The other great thing they said was, compare your city to other cities. Compare your cities to other cities your size. Compare your cities to other cities in your neighborhood and communities. This is what they said to do. It was recommended. And so I was just sitting there with this great big smile on my face going, unbelievable. And a couple of city administrators I talked to out there, they said, well, we start with a zero-based budgeting, and we justify each and every line item. I thought that was kind of interesting, but I just want you to know that this whole, they were encouraging cities to compare themselves to other cities. They said Manhattan compares themselves, their mill levy, to other cities their size. This is not, you know, it wasn't something bizarre that I dreamed up or I said we need to start doing. So the last thing, and this was a great section, on employees are the champions of our strategic plan, and how our city needs to be customer-driven. And they recommended a survey, that we take a survey of our customers and say, how is our city doing? Where do you think, are we meeting your needs? Where do we need to improve? And then that is our strategic focus going forward. I talked, the city that was presenting there was from Junction City, but there was a city in there called Spring Hill that's only 5,000 or 6,000 people, and they do it. And I talked to the city administrator, and she said that they do it every, she was actually finance director, but she said they do it every two or three years, just to see how their city's doing, based on the needs of the community. And I thought, that's what we need to be doing. We need to be customer-driven. We need to be meeting the needs of our residents. And until we do a survey and find out what they want done, we're doing what we think needs to be done instead of, and it also tells you if we're getting better, if we're improving, if people see that we're meeting their needs. The last thing, they talked about employee recognition. They talked about making a difference award. When somebody calls in and says, hey, I saw your employee doing this. This is great, to give them an award, let them be recognized. They also said they give, in the city of Lyons, they give an employee of the year award, one employee recommended by all the other city employees. A dollar raise per hour for getting that award. I thought we can implement something like this. And, but it's, you know, we have to start out, we have to start giving employee evaluations. We have to get department head scorecards, but to get, so that we become customer-driven. And the last thing I'm going to add is they talked about a thing called yourgov.com. And what it does is you sign up for this app, and then they, when they drive, when your residents drive to a city, they call this app and say, there's a pothole there. It goes to the department head, the department and the city administrator. The city, the department head has 48 hours to correct the problem or to respond to that person. And then the city administrator goes over it every week to say, how did you address that, how do you? I mean, it's totally customer-driven. They talk about streetlights being out, or catch basins not working, or potholes being fixed. And Junction City said that they use this. Olathe, that was one presenting, obviously uses this. And I said, you know, this is a bit of a stretch for us to think that we're going to be responding in 48 hours. However, I think if we start with the process of starting to be customer-driven, that we could get to that point where, you know, we could respond to their needs on a quick basis, and the community would see that we are customer-driven. So they had some great points. And it was really encouraging, although it made me realize we have a long ways to go to become a customer-driven council and to have strategic plans in place. You know, when Carol Blocker talks about, you know, we would like to know that in a few years we would have decent roads. Well, is that even a possibility? We have no idea because we've never done a strategic plan. I think that was one of the frustrating things to me when I first got on council. We don't have anything beyond the current budget. We don't know what we're doing beyond one year. That's not good for a city. So anyway, I just thought this was a great presentation. I wish you all would have been there. And we have a lot of work to do in our budget workshop. But anyway, that is my, I wanted you to know that I did attend. I got a lot of feedback. It was well worth the money, the taxpayer dollars. And we will, I think we will implement some of this. We will start having a strategic plan, and we will start recognizing our employees more, and we will become more customer-driven in our city. All right? Say hallelujah, amen?
Hallelujah.
Okay. With that being said, Keith, I know you have probably something exciting to report as well. Keith?
I liked the employee of the month idea though. I think that's a good idea.
Making a difference award. Don't you think about that? When people write in on a website and say, hey, I saw your employee doing this, above and beyond what they had to do. Like picking up trash, or, I'm just getting, taking an example, or helping an elderly person across the street. Your employee went above and beyond what they needed to do in that situation, and they're recognized for it. I think it's great. Thanks, Keith. Anything else?
Yes. This is going to be my soapbox for a while now. I mean, we had two chances to create some revenue, and we just passed up possibly $1,800 tonight. I don't see the logic behind this when we did not pass to charge somebody to use our dump and we're going to open the dump anyway for six days a week. I just, I don't see the logic of that. I mean, I don't see the chance of making money or a chance to make money and you guys vote no on it.
Well, you have to remember, it's going to take more work for our employees to.
Well, but the dump's going to be open anyway.
And the fuel, and we don't know what they were going to use.
The dump is going to be open anyway. We can charge that truck.
No, you were going to give them a key to have access to them 24/7.
Not when the dump is going to be open anyway.
What, okay, it's only open for.
My God.
Your soapbox. Can I get on it with you for a second?
Yeah.
So was it a dollar amount thing, or is it a principal thing for the people who are against that? Is it a, they're out-of-towners, we don't want to open that door, or is it the $150 is not even going to cover it?
I would think it's a consistencies thing. We told other companies that they can't use it unless it's Marysville dump, brush. And we're creating a monster by allowing other people to use, and we can't make money. We're not really making money on it, Keith. That was the deal. We can't make money on it. It's not a revenue generating thing.
Yeah, but if the dump is going to be open anyway, we still can charge $150 when it's going to be open anyway. We don't have to give them a key.
It's not open only from 4 to 6.
God.
Sorry, Keith. You win some, you lose some.
I mean, somebody's going to, somebody's going to be there anyway when the dump is going to be open, right?
4 to 6.
Okay. Whatever goes, $150 down the drain that day. Tomorrow, there's another $150 down the drain.
No, that's a week. That's a week.
Whatever.
Okay, Bill, you have anything? Darlene?
Well, I like this comment that Eric Wagner from Colorado left with the city of Marysville, stayed camped at the park, and he said, what a beautiful spot, and how nice of you to provide free camping. We are wondering how a small town managed to achieve such a wonderful park. Obviously, there's a lot of civic pride. A lovely town, too. We will stay a few days next time. And that comes back to our city staff taking good care of the park.
Yes, recognizing our city staff, and they should get applauded for that. Absolutely. Thanks, Darlene.
Couple of quick things. I read the article in terms of Dale, right? That was doing work. Would be, any idea when he's coming back?
Soon as he can get there. There's been placed some water heaters now.
Oh, is he? Okay.
And.
Are you doing the art center?
Yeah.
The back steps? Yeah, when she put down deck, I thought, we're putting a deck on there? It's the steps.
Yes, well, there's a little deck too.
I know, but it's not the steps.
Yeah, it's mostly the steps that were falling off.
Yeah, it's all those word things.
Just, anybody want free lunch? Friday, the Art Center, free lunch for kickoff of this year. And then I just have a question for, a citizen asked me about, is it, is it legal for somebody to live with a travel trailer on a property?
I think we've discussed this before. I don't think it is. Is it, Rick? You can have a travel trailer on the property, but nobody can live there.
Stop it, David. Can you let David know who it is?
That's basic. I was asking for, for my.
Well, speaking of David, I don't know about you guys, but I love this report. Don't you love this, that they're telling us what he's, how he's calling it?
Yeah, they've gotten, everybody's got them all done.
Yeah, so I love having this report, so.
I think the ones that are done, I think can be taken off the list. I mean.
Just keep it easier.
Yeah.
Ones that need to be, yeah.
Well, he could do.
There's more to add to it.
Yeah.
Well, also, you know, you don't know when he's got it done, so he needs to carry it.
Some of these have been done for four weeks now, and we've been seeing the same things. I mean.
But it's good to let us see what's been done. I mean, when it goes off the list, you forget about what all they've done, and you're looking for.
He could separate them, completed projects.
Yeah, pretty soon we're going to have two pay.
So can you request that?
No, it's not.
And then you don't have to look at the completed ones if you don't want to, Keith. Okay, Todd?
Uh, yeah.
Are you done?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Um, I think we talked about it the last meeting, 11 and 2 ago. There's some telephone poles in the right-of-way at Third and Jenkins that somebody was.
Vicki reported those were going to be moved.
They're still there, Vicki.
Well, thank you. I will talk to the person who told me that they would be removed. There's a place for them to go, and so I think it was a matter of the front load, somebody's front loader being made available. I'll check on it. Thanks.
Otherwise, it probably should go on our list.
And immediately west of there, across the street, there's a house and a garage, and probably some other structures buried in the debris and overgrowth while we're in the process of trying to clean places up. I don't think anyone lives there anymore.
Nobody lives there anymore.
That's probably ripe to be cleaned up because it's just going to be more of a, I don't know, habitat for wildlife and feral children.
That has been there for, that's probably been in that condition for 20 years.
Okay, well, you can get it on the list.
I think that would be great, since we're in that neighborhood. The other thing.
So you're going to put it on the list?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes. The other thing, this is a soapbox of mine I get on every growing season. People not mowing the right-of-way by their businesses. I speak of Dollar General Corporation. Who's my neighbor, and so I see it all the time. Every year, handful of times, we have to get on their case to mow it. It's about a foot tall, a little more right now, and they do it every time, and every time we have to harp on about it. They pay somebody, according to the manager, like $200 to mow that strip of grass. I'm half tempted to go over and mow it just because I'm sick of looking at it, and because it catches trash and it looks bad.
Well, you could do it for $200. That's a deal.
They don't put it up for bid. I don't, I know we have enforcing mechanisms to get places to do their mowing, and Dave's good about that. But we don't have a graduated system where if somebody's a habitual violator, we just treat them the same every time, is my understanding.
No, I'm sorry.
Do we have a, do we have a graduated system that I'm unaware of?
If somebody's been given a notice once, they get so much time to do it, right? The second notice, they don't get that time.
Correct. But they just do it every time. But we have to keep giving them notices. I'm of the opinion where it's in situations and I'm not directing it to them necessarily, is that people also like them that have a little, for whatever reason, they feel like they don't have to take care of what's in the city's right-of-way, but they do. That's the way it's actually, you know, controlled. We need to have a way to make them do it, and if that means increasing penalties, decreasing, I mean, timeframes, whatever it takes. But it is ridiculous that Dave has to waste his time because he's a busy person dealing with the same people every single year.
Absolutely.
Multiple times a year. I think we, whatever we can do to take it off of him and improve, you know, little things about our community makes a difference. So I don't know what it would take to make that kind of change, if that's something we have to do through, like ordinance? Rick, two cents?
Yeah, it's a tough look at it, see. I mean, I'd be happy. Take them to court, I guess.
I'd be happy to look at it and talk to Dave about it, but, you know, what do you do when people are just like, oh?
You'd think if somebody's got a contractor, they keep it up nice.
You would think. The thing of it is, the situation there, and it's. The thing of it is, the situation there, and it's probably the situation in other places, is that the people who operate the business don't own the property. And then, they don't actually contract with the people to maintain it, but the owners of the property contract with them. And so you get all these parties involved, and it's, everybody's passing the buck. And they've gotten used to where they can just let it go and let it go until we can, somebody, you know, the city gets on their case, and then they'll begrudgingly fix it, and then it happens again.
Does Dave do that, have to do that on an annual basis, the first notice and the second notice, he has to do annually?
They do it every year, I mean-
Well, those people are paying somebody to mow their lawn, so they're getting a freebie. You know, if they have to sit out a notice, they know we can't do anything about it. They, they get a notice, and they're going, they wait till the ten days are out, you know, and then they mow the lawn. Well, they should have had to mow twice in this period of time, once because they got the notice first. So they just bide their time.
They're basically abusing, they're abusing us.
They are, they are.
And then they blow it out in the street, eh?
Yes, they do.
There's a lot of that going on.
Oh, yeah.
All over town.
Is, is Dave, does he go around, or can the police go around and write the name down, and then do they get fined?
Yes.
If the judge sets a fine, if, if, one, if they get a ticket, and if the judge assesses a fine.
I mean, as many times as we've sat here at this table and said, don't blow your grass in the street, I cannot believe the amount of people that still blow the grass in the street.
They're understanding it, it blocks the drains.
See, on the key on that, YourGov.com app, you could call it and say, right here, they're doing it, and they could respond right away.
The police are driving around, they can see who started blowing it out in the street.
Well, they don't stop?
No.
You think the police go by when people have blown it out in the street?
Well, not even, I mean, you can tell when it's blowed out in the street.
You can tell when it's in the street.
I know, well, we think, I think we need to enforce that.
That's where he's gonna ask, do you want me to, because he's, this has come up on a number of topics. Do you want me to enforce this?
Because all it does is end up in the storm sewer, falls the catch basin.
Well, the answer is yes.
And it doesn't seem like a big thing when one person does it.
Yeah.
But it's just like all of these issues, but it's cumulative, and if you, people, you get permissive and you disallow it willy-nilly, then you build bigger problems, more expensive problems down the line.
Yeah, I think we just need to tell them to enforce it. Are you done, Todd?
That's it.
Vicky?
Thank you. Yeah, I want to say it one more time, since we're starting to mow, and the first mow is always the big one. It's just so easy to take and mow back on, the discharge back onto your lawn, the first three times you make the pass, and not blow it out into the street. One, one person is saying, well, you know, it's just my grass, and it does that, it's not gonna break, it's not gonna clog up a drain. Yours is, and the next guy down the blocks is, and it adds up. It costs us manpower, it costs us backups, it causes all kinds of problems. It's just as easy to just blow it back the other way onto your lawn. The first three passes, don't put it out in the street to begin with.
I am ultra lawnmower.
Well-
There you go.
Or mow it more often.
Or more often.
There you go.
Or both.
And then I want to say, when we were talking about giving somebody an award, or making recognition, or seeing somebody do something that they, you know, that, that's not part of their job, I gotta say, I saw Kent Bargman at Habitat for Humanity, and what happened, I'd gone in there to buy a bag of rags. Now, when people donate their t-shirts and soft cloth and stuff, volunteers go in there and take a scissors and cut out the best part of the shirt, and they bag them up for rags and sell them for seventy-five cents to two dollars. I went in there to get rags, and they had none, because somebody had just came in and had piled up a, a shopping cart full, and there wasn't any for me to buy. And that person that did that was Kent Bargman, and what I want to say is, one, he bought locally, two, he bought recycled and was gonna recycle it again, and, uh, three, that's paper towels that don't end up down the sewer. I don't know if he rewashes them, I don't know what he does with them, but I wanted to say thank you to him, and I'm not even sure I ever approached him to say thank you for that, but that was initiative on his part. It would have been easier to just call and order six, yeah, six dozen things of paper towels, and he didn't.
Was it for the city?
Yeah, it was for the city. He was thinking green, he was recycling, and he was shopping locally. I want to say thank you for that, Kent, that should be recognized, and using initiative. And, uh, another one, Ninth Street, I think the gentleman that we gave, he was before us here, last time or the time before, and we gave him till May something to clean up the lot, isn't happening. I think it's gonna be to the city to do it, and if you remember him saying, well, would it be cheaper if I helped the city clean it up? What, if I stepped in and helped him? So I think he's just waiting for us to show up, because you ought to see that place.
Well, he said he was gonna have a sale.
People working there.
Well, I can't, he had to-
He's got a camper there now.
Yeah. He had to move the lawn mowers, because they had, they had a plumbing line go through there.